Good evening. Welcome to City Council of the City of Lenore for Tuesday, October the 17th, 2023. We welcome you here this evening. Thank you for coming out and for tuning us in. We appreciate that. We have several things to do tonight on our council meeting. Before we go to our moment of silence and our pledge of allegiance, I would like to mention several families to you to please keep in your thoughts and prayers. First is the Linda Jonas, the family AG Jonas and Linda, who have been wonderful citizens of this community for so many years. Linda passed away over the weekend, very, really, very unexpectedly, and it's been tough on the family trying to adjust with that, but they have done so many wonderful things. Jonas Hill is part of the things that they have been a part of and so many things their family has done. So please keep the Jonas family in your thoughts and prayers. Also, the past mayor of Boone and a friend of ours, Rennie Brants, passed away a week or so ago. We want to keep his family in our thoughts and prayers as well. He was mayor of Boone for several years and we knew him and worked with him. And of course, our chancellor at Appalachian, Ken Peacock, passed away. Ken was a very active chancellor in our area. He was there during the three national championships and he carried the trophies around everywhere he went, loved it. We accused him of sleeping with him. I don't know if that was true or not, but Ken, Chancellor Peacock, we missed. We had some dealings with him here in Lenora and Colwell County, and we appreciate him working with our community college and doing so many things that we were partners in. So please keep those families in your thoughts and prayers. Please now join us for our moment of silence. Thank you. Please salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Tonight, we have a special guest joining us that will lead us off, our Economic Development Director of Colwell County, Ashley Bowick. Welcome, Ashley. We are always delighted to have you. And here's some good things. She'll be talking about a strategic plan for economic development for the county. So welcome.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Council. I appreciate the invitation to be here tonight and speak to you on behalf of the county and the Economic Development Advisory Committee of Colwell County. Recently, we've undergone a strategic planning process, and I came tonight to update you about that strategic planning process, as well as to solicit any feedback that you may have for us as we work through this plan and hopefully continue to make edits to this plan as we make growth and opportunity happen here in Colwell County. So first and foremost, why in the world did we need a strategic plan? You know, you've been around a long time and probably the city has a strategic plan or comp plan, and you understand the value of a document like this. But for me, as the new Economic Development Director for the county, it was really a guiding force for me and the staff to understand where we needed to spend our time, as well as to get feedback from different parts of the community as to where they thought we should be spending our resources. When we're applying for grant opportunities too, it's also wise and, you know, advised that we have a strategic plan that we can reference to, to say that we're making action towards the goals that have been established in that plan. So just a little bit of history about the document itself. The new Economic Development Advisory Committee was formed in April of this year. We began the strategic planning process by the Western Piedmont Council of Governments. Many of you are familiar with that organization. Mr. Anthony Starr and Taylor Dellinger came into our meetings and led those work sessions. We presented the draft document to the Economic Development Advisory Committee in June, and with their approval and recommendation, we presented that to the Colwell County Board of Commissioners in July and ultimately got their approval for the plan. Little shout out to the members of the EDACT, as we call it. Our board is a seven-team member committee led by Dr. Mark Porch from Colwell Community College. He's our board chair, and Mark Transu from First Citizens is the vice chair. Janet Aiken, Aiken Controls, Alan Murk from Blue Ridge, Richard Boyd from Automated Solutions, Rick Coffey from Aquari Modern, Max Dyer from King Cade, Jimmy Harrison from Colwell County, Anne Smith, retired banking professional. She's also city, or excuse me, town of Hudson Council member. Bonnie Cottle from Gamel, Chase Weinbarger from Sawmills, Jerry Church, Granite, Jonathan Greer from Hudson, John Blair, Banking, Rick Justice, Rhod His, Ronnie Setser, Caters Mountain, and then, of course, last but certainly not least, your own Scott Hildebrand. So I really appreciate all the wisdom on this committee. They offer a lot of guidance and support to myself and staff, and their time is very appreciated. So circling back around to the strategic plan and the process, we really went through a modified SWOT analysis to identify our strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. Listed here are the six top threats or weaknesses that were identified for Colwell County. These aren't new to you, I'm sure, but just to reiterate, lack of housing, lack of building sites for industrial use, lack of childcare and how that impacts labor participation, attracting younger employees and professionals to the region, lower salaries compared to other counties, and then, of course, population decline, which we've been talking a lot about recently. So in reverse of that, we talked about our opportunities or projects that we were working on or could be working on, our priorities, how we should be prioritizing our resources and time. The number one growth, or excuse me, opportunity listed there, supporting existing industries in Colwell County. Number two, finding new sites for industrial development. Help people, meaning our citizens, understand about the jobs and the opportunities and the training available here within the county. Utility projects, which would include water and sewer fiber. Working to collaborate with our other partners in the community and to make our communities more attractive with use of code enforcement, Main Street projects, so forth and so on. So with those opportunities and weaknesses identified, we came up collectively with four focus areas. So all of our strategic planning is really focused on four areas: existing industry support, site development and recruitment, public awareness and marketing, and other opportunities for collaboration, education, and support. So as we deep dive into the actual report itself, I thought I'd point out that some of the strategies in the comprehensive, or excuse me, the strategic plan coordinate with other plans in the region. So the Colwell County Comprehensive Plan, there's some shared strategies between that comp plan and the Economic Development Plan. There's shared strategies between the Western Piedmont Council of Government SEDs report, which many of you are familiar with. In fact, I think Mr. Ike Perkins served on the planning group who did the Western Piedmont SEDs. So there's some shared strategies that we pulled from that rapport or that plan into our plan. And then the My Future NC attainment strategies, you all know Dr. Kim Case and her work with My Future NC. So there are several strategies within our document that align with these. We wanted to make sure that we highlighted that. So the first focused area is existing industry support. So in total, there's about 11 different strategies, possible strategies listed in this focus area. And I should have said to begin with, we really intend for this to be a living document. So we really want to make sure that we are flexible as things change in our community. So on an annual basis, the plan is for the EDACT or the Economic Development Advisory Committee to evaluate this document, add things, take things away as we complete them. So again, your feedback is really important to us. But the first focused area, existing industry support, we're currently working on two main areas in that focus group. So we have been realigning some of the duties within the department. All of you know Mr. Bobby White, longtime champion here in Colwell County. He retired at the end of September, and with his retirement, Jesse Trivett, who works in my office, has been promoted to his role, which is more of a business expansion retention specialist. So his job is to focus solely, mostly, on our current industry in Colwell County. He'll be doing systematic site visits, developing tools, surveying our industry in Colwell County to see what it is that they need, see what the gaps are and how we can help with that. The second one is the educational awareness for our educators. So this isn't new, but it's kind of been modified, revamped. The former program was called Hired Ed. Some of you may be familiar with that program, where during the summer, they would take a group of educators and do some professional development, taking them on tours of different industries in Colwell County. Well, we're doing that again, but we've called it Workforce Wednesday: Connecting Careers to the Classroom, and we've taken it up a notch. Instead of going over the course of two or three days during the summer, we're actually taking the educators out of the classroom for four days during the school year. So what we're doing is we're focusing on four sectors in Colwell County where there's job growth, good opportunities for our students to get plugged into training opportunities here locally at the community college and careers here in Colwell County. So for example, we had our kickoff meeting in September. We took this cohort of 25 middle and high school students and counselors, and we focused that day on medical service careers and public service careers. We all have job openings here locally in our government positions, and those are wonderful careers for students to look into. So again, focusing on healthcare and public service, we took tours that day of various entities across Colwell County. Then we spent lunch on the campus of Colwell Community College, where we engaged the teachers with the instructional programming at Colwell Community College related to healthcare careers. We also had a really wonderful panel from Colwell Memorial Hospital, UNC Healthcare, who came in and talked to us about careers in healthcare. This program is well received. The teachers that are participating in it are amazed to find out about the opportunities here locally in Colwell County, and the hope is that they go back and share this with their peers, excuse me, as well as their students, so we can make sure that we're engaging our students and the peers who work in the classroom and that they know about the opportunities here locally. So our second focus area, site development and recruitment. So there's three areas here that we're currently working on, the staff and I. We are working to study the feasibility and the development of the rail and the Foothills Regional Airport. So excited about this. Had a phone call today with our consultant, Sanford Holzhauser, who's been conducting the Foothills Regional Airport feasibility study and targeted marketing analysis. That's the key right there. Who do we market this land to? So we should have a report in hand by the end of the week, have a meeting scheduled with some of the managers, so we can get an idea of what this report's going to look like before we take it to the Airport Authority Board, which I know Mayor Gibbons is on, and to the EDAC Board. So this study will identify who we should be targeting, the almost thousand acres out there at the airport, to trying to get some industry there on the Colwell Burke County line. The second area that we're working in, in the site development and recruitment focus group, is identifying other sites in Colwell County that we can do industrial development on. The next slide I'll show you is a snapshot of Evergreen Industrial Park, which you may have heard of, but we want to recreate that. The commissioners have said, hey, Ashley, we want to do this in every local government in Colwell County. So we have contracted with Western Piedmont Council of Governments to do a feasibility study of the entire county to look for opportunities where the county and our local government partners can work together to do more industrial site development work. The third thing listed here is exploring additional public-private partnership opportunities. This is something that's been done in other areas across the state and the country. Our neighbors next door, Catawba County, they are, we'll say, experts at this. So I'm taking a note from their playbook, and they've shared a lot of their resources. Shout out to actually all of our economic development commissions around us, who've been very gracious and helpful as I've transitioned into this new role. But we're looking at some public-private partnerships. We've had people approach the county who say, hey, look, we're interested in supporting you in this. How can we do it? So conversations continue. Here, as promised, is a snapshot of the Evergreen Industrial Park. We're really excited about this industrial park. It's a partnership with the town of Sawmills. It's 34 acres roughly, and it has utilities adjacent to the site. Just, I guess, two weeks ago now, we announced the receivable of ARC grant. So just over $500,000 awarded by the Appalachian Regional Commission to extend the water and sewer lines from the adjacent property onto the land. This is a matching fund grant, so Sawmills and the county are putting in, you know, $500,000 as well for a grand total in this project, just over $1,026,000. So we're very excited to kick off this project. We're still doing due diligence, getting ready to start the Phase Two environmental review. The plan, right now, as you see it, is for four roughly 50,000 square foot building, one 2,000 square foot building divisible. So the fourth, well, sorry, rather, third area is public awareness and marketing. I expanded on that a little bit with the Workforce Wednesday program. But right now, we have completed, thank goodness, the website improvements. Our old EDC website was 14 years old. If you know anything about websites, that's really old. So we've worked diligently, the staff, mostly Randy Knopf in the office, to work with a third-party golden shovel, who is an expert in economic development website, and we're very pleased with it. There's lots of information here. We even highlight all the communities, including the City of Lenore, on this website. There's a report builder, so if anyone has a company that's looking to relocate, you know, they can be directed to myself or staff, or even someone here on the City of Lenore staff, and you can click on a couple buttons on the homepage, and it generates a report that is a PDF that can be emailed out to the developer or the prospective company. In addition to website improvements, we know that today's youth are really into videos, short videos. So we are really actively engaging our creative skills, as well as those who are experts in this area, to start using video and multimedia to reach the demographics in which we're trying to reach. One of the things that we're doing is reviving a old program with the Colwell County Government TV station. We're calling it Colwell Made, and we are partnering with the Chamber of Commerce as well. The chamber will focus on six sectors or small businesses in the county. I will focus on different industry in the county. We will actually produce, with the help of the Colwell County Government TV staff, a full-length 30-minute video that will air on the county television station. But we all know the demographic of that is, you know, 80-plus, not necessarily the workforce that we're trying to engage in our jobs locally. So we take that video, that footage, and we break it down into smaller 30-second, one-minute videos that we can share on social media platforms, and we have a library of this that our school system has access to and can use to hopefully share in the classroom. Last one, I promise. Fourth focus area, other opportunities for collaboration, education, and support. I don't know about you, but at my house, I have one of those junk drawers in my kitchen that catches everything. This is that area that catches everything, that we didn't really neatly know where to put it. So one thing that I really realized in economic development, it's not just my job. It's not just your job. It's everybody's job. We all got to work together to make things better here in Colwell County. It's a team effort, and there's lots of collaboration that needs to happen. If it's not happening, it needs to happen. So other opportunities is where we stick projects like My Future NC, where we want to collaborate with Kim in the calls, to have all these people credentialed locally for future employment opportunities in Colwell County. We have been working with the Center of Rural Innovation. This was a grant that we received from our friends at Google to assess the community, to see if we would be a spot for a tech hub. So this is something that we're working on with partners at the community college and the Center of Rural Innovation. Secondly listed there, promoting the development of bicycle and pedestrian facilities, connecting communities in our area. It's really not in my wheelhouse, per se, as the Economic Development Director, but we can promote it, and we can work with our partners at the Chamber of Commerce and Western Piedmont Council of Governments, who are helping us look for grant funding to connect Colwell County to the trail system that Hickory has so artfully created just across the river. So this is just two examples of how we're working in this focus area currently. I feel like I've talked a lot, and I've talked pretty quickly, but I welcome your feedback and suggestions. As I said, the strategic plan, which I know is in your agenda packet, is intended to be a living document, something that we edit and modify based on the suggestions that our EDAC offer. So you have Scott, who's on our EDAC board, and we would love to get your feedback, you know. So if you have any, please direct it my way or towards Scott, and we'll make sure that we are including that in our next revision of the strategic plan. That's all I have, unless you have any questions for me.
Any questions for Ashley?
Great, great, good start, and, you know, a lot of good things are going on with it, I know. I appreciate all the work you're doing around the county. The airport thing has been great. We got a gym there. We just got to figure out how to use it. A lot of good things are going on, so.
Did you say that's 34 acres?
Yes, sir. We think roughly 800 usable. Oh, you're talking about Evergreen, I think, 34 acres.
Yeah, I was talking about the airport.
Airport is 1,000 acres.
Wow, yeah.
800 usable. 34 acres is the Evergreen Industrial Park in Sawmills.
There's a lot, airports, a lot of space.
Yep.
Very nice. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ashley. Come back anytime. All right. We'll move on then to, we don't have matters scheduled for public hearings this evening, so we'll move to the consent agenda items consisting of the minutes of the City Council meeting of Tuesday, October 3rd. The item B are minutes of the closed session minutes of the City Council meeting of Tuesday, October 3rd. These were reviewed by the City Council, the City Manager, and the City Attorney. Item C is a change order number two. This is for the Smith Crossroads Sewer Project. Recommendation that the council approve a change order number two, as recommended by McGill and Associates, for the crossroads sewer improvements to reflect a net increase in the contract amount of $34,740 as submitted. The additional background information is included on the council action form in the agenda packet. And item D is the 2024 City Council meeting schedule, and this would be to approve the schedule following the review by the City Council as submitted. That's items A through D. I'll open up for any questions or comments or action, whenever you're ready.
Make a motion to approve items A through D as presented.
Thank you. I have a motion for Mayor Pro Tim Thomas to approve the consent agenda items A through D as presented. No other questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. And it's five tonight? Five, yeah. Thank you. Missing Councilmember Purdue and Councilmember Prestwood are both out of town. All right. We'll move on then to requests and petitions of any citizens. If there's anyone here tonight that would like to address the council, most our staff. We welcome Kimmy here. Josh, you want to be a citizen tonight? Okay, you can. All right. Nothing to come before us there. We'll move on. We don't have reports of our boards and commissions, so we'll move on to the report and recommendations of the City Manager, Mr. Hildebrand.
Mr. Mayor, Council, tonight's only information items for you. You have in your packet the 2024 holiday schedule for your information. That, as you know, we follow the North Carolina State holiday schedule. One-stop voting begins on Tuesday, October 19th, through Friday, November 3rd, from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at the Colwell Resource Center on Hospital Avenue, known as the former library, and then also on Saturday, November 4th, from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. This weekend, on Saturday, we're hosting the annual Wood, Fire, Smoke Festival. Be held from 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. in downtown Lenore, actually in the parking lot behind this building here. And you go online to downtown Lenore's website to go back and get more information on the events. And I know Matthew's here. If he wants to say anything about it in my comments, you're welcome to do that. The planning board, the Board of Justice, will not meet in October. We have no items on the agenda for that. Next Tuesday, you have the committee of the whole, 8:30 a.m., 3rd floor City Hall. The Foothills Regional Airport Authority will meet on Wednesday, October 25th, at noon at the airport. The Downtown Trunk or Treat and Matt Hatter's Pumpkin Parade, Patch Parade will be held on Friday, October 27th, from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. in downtown. Parks and Recs also hosting a Halloween movie night on Friday, October 27th, at the Downtown Stage, showing The Nightmare Before Christmas from 6:30, 8:30 p.m., and the public's invited to attend at no cost. Parks Recreation is also hosting the Run For Your Life 5K on Friday, October 27th, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. in downtown, and they've got some pretty elaborate t-shirts for that, if folks want to run for your life and get one of those. You also have a trunk or treat to be held on Tuesday, October 31st, beginning at 5:00 o'clock at MLK. Centering, the public's invited to attend, and I think candy is available as long as it lasts, is what I was told on that. Also, want to go back and mention that we've got, keep Phil Harper in your prayers. She's going for knee surgery next week. As you're aware, Kalen Horn from the Main Street has had knee surgery, so we've got a lot of folks on the disabled list right now. And then finally, I got three, the three Js are going to school. Jeff, Joshua, and John are all going to the Municipal Administration Course at UNC Chapel Hill starting next week, and wish them luck on that, and tell them that I'll share a room and save a little money on that. But I appreciate them taking that class and doing that. So with that, that's all I have, unless you have questions.
Any questions, Mr. Hildebrand? I'm starting to get it. Matthew, you want to give us a quick update on what's going on this weekend? We always look forward to Wood, Fire, and Smoke, originally called Smoking in the Foothills. Got a lot of barbecue coming and a lot of other things.
Absolutely. Thank you, Council. Just first of all, real quick, thank you to the county and their partnership in making this festival happen, utilizing spaces in their parking lot, giving us electricity, water, the things that we needed to make it all run. The Wood, Fire, and Smoke Festival is actually an iteration of our barbecue festival that now features more artisan and craftsmanship than it does barbecue. There is barbecue still there, but if you get a chance, come out. We've kind of increased our spectacle events this year. We're trying to do it to where people get a chance to see how all of these kind of things are made as they come onto the festival grounds. So this year, the Western North Carolina Sculpture Center will be doing live iron pouring all throughout the day. You can get tiles done that day. You can actually get a sand mold that day, get it made, take it home. You can do some tiles for the clock tower this weekend as well. We also have the North Carolina School of Glass coming out, doing glass blowing demonstrations throughout the day. I've got a chainsaw artist doing two chainsaw carvings throughout the day. I've got a metal shop coming out and doing live metal forging, teaching people how to hammer weld or showing them how to hammer weld, and three bands that are going on throughout the day. So come out. There's a lot of things to do. So, thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. I know there's been a lot of great planning going into it, and as you mentioned, you can do the tiles for the clock tower if you would like to. This would be a perfect time to do it. They're actually going to be pouring the tiles that have already been done. Isn't that right, Matthew?
Right.
So the ones that have been done to this point will be poured, getting ready for that. But you can continue to do the tiles to go on that. So if you're interested in that, please come out for it. So thanks for the work on it. All right. Anything else? Okay. All right. We'll go to our report and recommendations of the City Attorney, Mr. Rohr. Anything?
I think we're fine. Thank you.
Thank you. And I was trying to think. I don't have anything report that we haven't already talked about. We've discussed all the things that are coming up. Got a busy month of October, and that will move right into November with Light Up Lenore coming and all the stuff. Christmas decorations are right around the corner of going up, and then there will be a lot of events, not only November, but into the early Christmas season. We're actually adding more. We're actually adding more decorations and things, I think, and spreading it out a little further. That's what I've been told anyway. Starting down at the fire station, I think, we'll be having some things and coming up through Harper Avenue, so there's a lot, a lot of things going on with that. So, appreciate everybody's involvement, everybody's work as we go into a very, very busy fall season of events happening on that. All right, anything from our council members? I know you guys want to talk.
Nope, we've got another meeting before we talk about this a little earlier.
Turkey's coming.
Turkey's coming.
For sure.
For sure.
Anything else from anybody coming before us? Anything from any of our staff that you need to bring up? No Radford, you can't. All right, if nothing else to come before us, we stand adjourned. Thank you for being here.